Okay, we get the meeting started here January 15th with a blood prayer from Pastor Steve by One Connect and a pledge of allegiance.
Listen, Lord, we thank you that you are mighty God. We thank you that you're a part of our lives. And Lord, we continue to pray for the men and women in our village. And Lord, I pray that you give them guidance. I pray that you keep them safe. And Lord, we just pray for 2024, that you give us a light, the path for us, and Lord, give us the courage to walk down. And we just thank you and we praise you. In Jesus's name. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Of course.
Roll call?
Bassett.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eggly.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion of nominations for the open council seat. They had the committee discuss that. So, the committee would like to address that?
Oh, yeah. We went over the four applications that were turned in, and all four of them had a chance to meet full council and introduce themselves, and council had a chance to ask them questions. We went over the applications and looked at pros and cons of all of them. We all had them down to number one and number two choice, all three of us, and we all come with the conclusion of the top unanimous choice that we had picked for our committee, which was in your personal committee minutes. So, that's just the committee's recommendation.
At this time with protocol and everything and how this usually has happened different times in the past, they can make a nomination, I believe, with what me and Cheryl talked. If you'd like to do that, we would entertain that motion. We'd have that a second, and they can vote.
I'd like to nominate Rob Bailey.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Miller?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
All right. It's like Rob Miller? Nope?
Bailey.
Wow. Rob Bailey. Sorry about that. We will have Rob come to the next council meeting and get sworn in and get a seat taken. It'll be the first meeting in February. Thank you for working on that. Next, we have, oh, is there a Dave and Jane LeVoy? I know they had requested to meet here today. I don't see them in the audience. Next, we have Jack Thiel with the Young Republican Club. Jack, would you want to go up to the podium and the microphone in your room?
Yeah.
You guys, thank you.
So, hello. My name is Ron Bassett. This is Jack Burgavon. We're the founders of Roosevelt Reagan Society here in Defiance County. So, basically, we're a Young Republicans Club trying to get started up here in the county where we're trying to get most of our youth in that more involved in not only politics, but basically kind of our global affairs, you know, with the dismay that our country is in and around the world. We're hoping to get a lot more of our young leaders out there and give them the opportunity to have a voice and get more involved. So, we're then try to have a big kickoff event coming up here, and we're very gracious for not only you guys providing us the opportunity to speak here tonight, but also the Hickso schools, which I want to make clear that we're not affiliated in any sort of manner or any of that with, but they're providing us the opportunity to host it here at Hickso High School.
Okay.
And with the help of our representative, Jim Hoops, we were able to get four of our primary candidates here to agree to do an open forum where we'll be asking them questions solely based off of the upper generation, which, like Robin said, the school gave us the space to host this event, which will happen on January 25th at 5:15. That's when the doors will open, and the actual event will start at 6:00.
At the high school?
Yeah. And we encourage everyone to come out. It doesn't matter if you're youth or if you're older. We encourage everyone to come out and kind of listen because it'll kind of give you a better opportunity to see what the candidates have to offer. Even if you've always voted one way or another, this will provide a great opportunity for you to kind of see what these candidates stand for.
True. Do you know what candidates are currently going to be attending the event? You said you had four lined up?
Yeah. Jaromodjuski, Steve Lackenow, Craig Riedel, and then Derek Maron. So, Derek Maron was kind of a little last second, throw his hat in the ring, but the other three candidates have been in for a while.
What date did you say?
January 25th.
It'll be held in the commons at the school.
And at the very end, after we have our Gen Z questions, there will be an opportunity where all four candidates will come back on stage and ask any questions from the audience. And Dave Kern, our county commissioner, he'll be there monitoring, and he'll be one of the people present.
Very good. How are you doing your outreach right now? Do you have like a Facebook page and a website or anything people can check into it?
Roosevelt Reagan Society. So, that's our Facebook page, and we've reached close to 2,000 people so far, and we have people all over kind of coming out and saying that they're in. We have a teacher from Swan said he's interested in bringing a few students over. So, we're trying to get this outreach as big as possible and try to have the biggest event.
Right. Anybody have any questions? I'm just saying thank you for what you're doing and outreach and everything, getting people involved in politics. I think it's a great thing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I think that's really cool that you're getting people involved.
Thank you.
Next, we had Erica from the Defiance County State Steve, but we're going to move her further into the meeting because I know she would, the questions and information she wants to pass on would be an executive. So, we'll move her down. That way we can keep moving with the current meeting minutes. So, along that matter, does anyone have any of the January 2nd regular county council meeting minutes? And if I have any questions, concerns?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second. Roll call?
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
We also have in here the January 8 special meeting minutes. If you have any questions, concerns on that?
I make a motion. It's pretty much written.
I would change the date, sorry, on the last one and this one to 2024.
A second.
Roll call?
Bassett?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Next is the bills list. They made questions, concerns on the bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I'll second.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Board and commission meeting minutes. Anything happen?
Water sewer met right before the meeting tonight, and I'll get the minutes to Cheryl hopefully by tomorrow. Been last very long. We just got updates from Cory for a couple of projects coming up in 2024, and then there is a issue where a property owner was seeking reimbursement for a plumbing bill. Committee feels that, yes, the village was at fault on this one, so Cory can get with Cheryl as far as handling the reimbursement. That was pretty much it.
Good. More committee meetings. So, does anybody else have any committee meeting minutes?
So, finance committee meeting met January 10th at 4:30. Cheryl has those minutes. She'll get those forwarded out, but we discussed reimbursement for work that was done by the Little League Soft Cars Association. That reimbursement amount was less than $4,500. Committee voted 3-0 to provide the reimbursement back to the softball. They did permanent additions, concrete, lumber, and things like that. We just briefly discussed the EMS equipment needs, and we're kind of waiting to see what the status of the hospital is to approve some of the larger items, but we are keeping that in front of our minds. We briefly spoke about EMS wages. We do want to reevaluate that, but the proper time to do that is in the fall when we do budgets, and we're going to look at different municipalities' wages and the benefit package because it's not always just how much they make per hour. So, we're going to look into that to do diligence. And then there was an idea that was presented regarding part-time and volunteer entities and incentive system that may be a way to encourage more involvement in the department, try to take the stress off of some of the four full-time entities we have. And I think that's about it. Any questions?
Any other committee meetings?
Administrator's report? Wednesday, on Wednesday, January 3rd, up to Metal Lane, we had another water service line rupture. That does make seven ruptures, seven repairs since June of 2021. We know that there's a major issue with the water line infrastructure out there. Hopefully here in the next month or two, we will go to bid to replace all those service lines now on Metal Lane along with Beverly Drive. We were awarded a $150,000 CDBG grant, and that money will go to pay for the six new water main valves that we're going to be replacing this summer, along with the demolition of the old water tower downtown behind the library. Did submit a second grant application to the Ohio Senate capital budget on behalf of the village for the construction of the pool. That one was for $2 million. We do have another one for $2 million to the Ohio capital improvement program as well. All the agreements, contracts have been signed with Vernon Eagle Incorporated as of January 9th for the construction of the splash pad. There is a pre-construction meeting scheduled for the splash pad on January 29th at 2:00 P.M.
I had a quick question about when we talked on the, for your vacation, but I actually called you. We got resubmitted the amount of that, one of the loans.
Yes, about the state capital improvement.
What was it?
Two million to one million.
I guess we're getting looked at kind of heavily. Hopefully on that, I talked to a couple of the council people in regards. Cory was on vacation, and me and Cheryl talked because they submitted. So, hopefully that would be a nice grant towards that project, and hopefully it's going to look at favorably. So, thank you for working on that. Now, to anybody else have any questions for Cory? Very good. Solicitor's report. Rachel?
I've got two here. First reading of ordinance 2023-19 by caption only to amend the appropriations and declaring emergency.
Motion to suspend?
No, we don't have the.
We're not.
We don't think we do it.
Well, we have five of five. That's 80%.
We have four of six.
Well, there's an empty spot.
There's only one hundred or so.
Oh, okay.
Anytime we've had four in the past, we haven't been able to approve anything emergency.
How soon do you need this?
Yesterday emergency.
Well, the only reason I can do it right now is because I didn't close out 2023 yet. So, I won't be able to close out 2023 without it.
Do we have a deadline to close out 2023?
No.
And yeah, how long run might he out?
He didn't think long when I talked to him over the weekend. The procedure is not in the whole street lane. Rough procedure, but he's got some time for recovery. So, I would assume he'd be back by next meeting.
Well, it'll be three weeks till our next meeting. I'd say pull the special one and just take a vote. Unless you're okay, wait until February 2nd, which might not.
February 2nd, suck that with me.
Okay, that's fine.
With all, for all emergencies, so.
But she can still read, and it'll be a first read.
Well, she doesn't want to.
That's my job in here. First reading of, okay, resolution 2024-05 by caption only to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering for the Metal Lane Beverly Drive Water Service Replacement Project and declaring emergency.
I'll take a look at those again at the next meeting. Thank you, Rachel. Department heads, please, chief Dan. Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. The only thing I got is the new part-time. She has decided not to accept that position. I got announced by, but I talked to the mayor and Cheryl today, but it's respect her choice. And we discussed paying, the mayor had conversation with Jennifer last Friday.
Yeah, just up on there.
Friday about the mayor's clerk stuff. She's willing to take it on, and told her she was all right with that. I'm good with that if she wants to take on that challenge. So, we talked about maybe paying her a dollar more an hour. Cheryl's going to look into that, and so she's already working on some stuff already on that site. We had to do quarterly reports that were actually due today, but I still suggested that we still need to consider part-time just to have a backup for my position and a mayor's court position up there for my clerk. So, and I know I've talked to Cory, maybe about him looking at somebody too. So, you know, probably we come down to it, but it's something, in the future, we're going to get mayor's court backup and run it as quickly as possible, and then we'll look at the part-time. So.
Was that position already doing mayor's court, right? Am I thinking that wrong?
It was in the past.
It wasn't in the past.
Julie had, and it had changed at different levels. I mean, there used to be a mayor's clerk, and that's all they did. But then back in, I think, Diane Collins's term, Mayor Collins, she combined what Julie was able to do it and then combined those jobs together.
I guess my question is, was that position, was that salary already based on them doing the job?
Yeah.
They got, she got paid out in mayor's court.
Yeah. There's a mayor's court.
There was a mayor's court.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
And based off her opinion, she says too much for the administrator to do. But she prefers to take it on and see how it goes. So, so far, she's doing a great job. We've gotten through plenty of public records and stuff, so.
After talking to Cheryl about that too, because I'm learning too about mayor's court. That's it. It's an hourly pay, and however many hours they put into mayor's court comes out of that, that's salary, that wage is set aside for that. So.
So, it wouldn't be a dollar an hour increase. It would only be based on hours that she worked that you would.
Well, I said, it's, yeah, I mean, my recommendation was you can take out my budget. I don't care if I can afford it out of that budget to pay her that 21 an hour. And then with that, or do you have to pay her?
I would recommend that it stays in the mayor's court wage because that's already allocated, and you've got, and then you'd have less with overtime and stuff.
Okay.
So, my recommendation would be to stick it where we've already put the money.
And then maybe look at that budgeting that year, and?
Depending on where it ends up.
Yeah.
I guess it depends on how many cases that they have, the number of hours that they'd actually have to put into.
Okay. Can maybe keep track of those hours, so when it comes time for budgeting, we can look to see.
Well, I said, take it out of that fund and be able to be able to track how much you spent this year and see if we need to add to it or if it's that much.
Start to get the budget.
Yeah.
In the mayor's court, isn't it?
Yeah. I think they already had figured out about 10 hours a week before was an average thing. So.
I think a lot of it has to depend on the level of cases and how they have to report to.
Yeah, it's the paperwork that involves, you know, this statute, you have to report to the state, and then, you know, if someone doesn't pay a ticket or whatever, the paper they gotta go through to send that person the notification and.
Julie even said there's always been a lot of paper.
Yeah. I mean, if someone doesn't show up for court, they're sending out letters. See, these people trying to get them in court, and they may go two, three times with those trying to get them in to pay, and then we process might be then know if money is taken to suspend.
Licenses, registrations.
So, you said 10 hours a week. Is that in addition to the hours that she's already working?
Well, it will be.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I was saying that 21, she would do it for the 21 regardless of what the hours were, but.
How many hours does she kind of like work?
She works 40.
40. So, this would be 50 hours a week?
Well, she'll do it in the stream of her job.
Oh, so not in addition?
No, no. She's going to do it in the stream. But it averaged out to be when Julie was doing it, she was doing about 10 hours a week, you know, because she was paid out in mayor's court for the mayor's court salary line, and then she's paid out of the police department's budget line before for her regular. Okay? So, so she averaged about 10 hours, 15 hours, you know, per paid period that probably came out of the mayor's court line.
So, that's for two weeks, though.
For two weeks.
No, he said per paid period, 10 to 15.
Yeah.
Per paid period. Paid periods, two weeks, right?
Yeah. So, that is probably right. 10 to 15 hour per paid period.
Mayor's court twice a month, so.
Right, yeah. Same days as council, right?
Well, we might change that. We're going to talk and see what works best for.
Well, we'll just track and see how it goes.
Yeah. Well, like I said, we might, we talked about maybe changing the day. I want to be work with Julie and the chief on what better dates of Mondays are rough for putting how many.
Not Julie. Just Jennifer.
Jennifer and the chief. I'm going to get names wrong.
I got you.
Wow. But we're going to talk about it. I'm kidding.
Okay, that's the one job right now.
Okay, so I'm glad you recovered. Recovery's going well, and welcome back, and thank you.
All right. Thanks.
We got fire chief Bruce.
I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget it. 510 is going to be out of service for a while.
511.
Went through a.
511.
I'm sorry.
511.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. 511, our second squad. Thanks, Bruce.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. It's going to be out of service. They did a full, complete rundown yesterday on it, started it up, went through all the gadgets and everything that's on that truck, and they begin to smell burning wires in it. So, they shut her down and didn't go any farther with that. But the reason why we're taking it out of service is because you run down the road, sometimes you have headlights on it, sometimes you don't. Also, half the time, the heat or the AC doesn't work either way. So, we either got to really dig in and repair this one, which I don't suggest we do. I think we should get a remount if we can.
How many miles does it have? How many miles does it have?
Bruce, do you know?
Not right off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's quite an old.
Oh, you know how old?
I'm thinking that this came into service in 20, late, late, like 2009 to like 2011.
When Wendy was.
Yeah.
And.
Not, not to interrupt him, but this has been an ongoing problem since we bought this. That, that ambulance has been in and out of the service shop so many times, and at some point, you're throwing good money out for bad.
Yeah, I get it.
And at this, at this point, I mean, like he said, if you're going down the road and all of a sudden you're losing headlights and it's, you know, like it is now, it's not really a very decent thing.
Daryl Chapman, uh, Chapman, Daryl in Sherwood, they just bought a remount for $150,000, and he went out to Oklahoma and drove it back. So, he's happy with it. I asked him what kind of money that we'd be talking if I started the issue with it. He said, oh, hey, we're between 150 and 180 would be in the ballpark. So, just set that in the back of your minds and think about it, whether you want me to go further into getting a complete overhaul on it or going down the road and try to find a remount.
Do you remember what the price of the newer one, wasn't it 200 and?
Yeah, it was like.
Yeah, 250.
240, 250.
That's the west chassis, the whole nine yards.
Yeah. The, the, I think I, I started the process of looking for some grant money last night just to see if there's something out there that we could, you know, if there's some grant money available, you know, at least we got something to come back to you guys with.
Sure. Do you know how many payments we have left on the existing?
Would that be 510 for one?
No.
So, what are the numbers of the ambulance? 511 is out of service. What's the other?
510.
510?
510. Just for your, for your fit, you know, 510 is the red one.
The red one, okay.
And 511 is the white one.
Yeah, that helps.
What was the old one that we saw?
That was old 510.
Old 510. Was that, what color was that one?
That was white.
Okay.
Why do you pay this much?
Well.
All payments.
One year or?
Yeah, so we pay monthly.
Also, on EMS side, Abby's getting two more quotes for outsource the billing. You want, want to get actual numbers, and hopefully she said by the end of the week she should have them. I'm not going to guarantee it, though. Also, since I'm not really up to speed on EMS stuff, I'm appointing Brusilka as my EMS coordinator. He's not going to be the chief. He's going to just be a coordinator with everybody else that's involved over there. They're all coordinators, but Bruce is going to spearhead this for me. So, from now on, if we have any EMS questions, it'll go to me and then to him in writing if you can, okay? So, we don't have any miscommunications. It's a lot better if we put in print instead of just phone calls.
Absolutely. Do we have a job description document or even have a title for that?
What you got, chief?
You said, you said coordinate. You have already coordinators.
No, I do not have a coordinator. I don't have an EMS.
Yeah, you said something about you already had coordinators.
Oh, I.
Spearhead this.
Yes, everybody.
So, you don't have, he's going to be the main coordinator.
He's going to be the main coordinator.
He's the main one.
I'm sorry.
Everybody has a group EMS.
Yeah.
Is participating.
I see.
To help the end goal.
Okay, yeah.
Everybody's, everybody's tripped in here in the last week, two weeks, and I really appreciate it. It's taken a lot of pressure off of me. So, he's volunteered kind of to take the job. So, I'm happy with that.
Are you, you're okay with that?
What?
You're okay with that, stepping up and doing that?
Yeah. I, I mean, I.
I appreciate someone taking.
I, I saw what happened to him last week, and I was really hot. It's taken me a week to get over what, what happened in here last week with him. So, yeah, I'm going to step up and, and do this because, because he, he doesn't, he didn't know EMS. It's not a sight on him. It's not, it's not a sight on anybody. It's, he just didn't know. And so I'm, I'm more than willing to, to step up and help out, you know, because at the end of the, at the end of the day, it's not about anybody. It's, it's not about us. It's about them out there.
Good point.
Thank you. I don't have anything on the fireside, which is, we haven't had much. Settled, toned down last night for a structured fire, ended up being a chimney fire, so that was good. You know, 25 below zero windshield factors out there. We'd have had a lot of damage, so I'm glad it wasn't more than that. Any questions?
I had a quick question. Do you guys still do smoke detector installation, or do you sell those, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. All they have to do is call over here, and then they'll get the message to me. I'm. Yeah, we do, all they have to do is, uh, uh, call over here and then they'll get the message to me, I've got over there in the office.
Okay.
Say like five bucks.
Yeah, it's usually a donation, we don't charge, but it's anywhere between five and ten or whatever the person wants to give. And if they can't put them in and install them themselves, I'll find somebody, you or myself will go install it, so.
What phone number would they call Bruce if they're interested in a smoke detector or?
They have, they have to, I think the smoke detectors are actually here.
No, they're, they're all over here.
Okay, so I would just call, I would just call the fire hall.
Yeah, actually the number, the, the number we have, then it, it transfers to me then, so.
Okay, that's five-four-two thirteen forty-eight?
Yes, yeah, that number, then it transfers over. Any questions?
I got one question. Uh, when, last time Brian Kimmer was here, he made a comment about checking to see, verifying to make sure Hicksville ladder truck, the hundred-foot ladder truck, was NFP A standard?
Still is, is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I mean, anyone that has the answer, I don't know, they sound like the fines had one and it wasn't in compliance, so that's.
That's an issue that I have to check, okay, that's just one of my things from the previous administration to me. No paperwork, I haven't bombed any paperwork, that was.
So, he, he may sound like there's, and the fines wasn't allowed to be in service because it wasn't up to date or in compliance, so I was just checking to see.
So I, I, I didn't, I, I didn't hear what, what transpired as far as that. I will say that these, that, that was inspected, I don't know how many years ago, uh, it was like inspected like a year after we bought it. Just to make sure that, you know, everything was good, pretty sure that Scott had told, that's what Scott had told me. As far as it recent, I can't answer that because.
I can't answer either.
You know, I mean, obviously, uh, obviously because, you know, if there's, if there's a paper trail over there, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to find it. But, um, as of now, I, we can't answer that appropriately tonight.
So what's NFPA?
National Fire Protection.
Not, National Fire Protection Agency, that's, it's the agency that pretty much regulates, uh.
Fire code for billions, everything, interest is.
Do they have to come in like annually or?
No.
No?
No, it's not, it's not an annual thing.
Okay.
But you have to take it out.
NFPA standards is basically saying, hey, if you have a ladder and it's operating this, this and this, it falls within a certain standard.
Okay.
So like say if it gets too much heat on it, there's supposed to be NFPA stickers that's on these ladders and if they turn a certain color.
Oh.
It goes out of service because it's not within NFPA standards.
And then they have to.
And so now it has to be tested.
Okay, repaired and.
Yes.
Yeah, either tested or however to see if it, if it withstands whatever heated, lost or however, in order for it to not be a danger out on the fire ground.
Right.
And then a new sticker gets placed and a new inspection date gets put on it as well.
Okay.
You know, so that's basically your hood, your helmet that you wear, all that has to go through the NFPA, your gear is NFPA standards.
Okay.
So everything is just underneath whatever their standards are as far as.
And if it says fire, it's twice the amount of money that you buy.
Weather-related, all that sort of thing, okay.
Thanks Derek, appreciate it.
Sorry, give me a minute.
Anything else?
Do they have any questions for Bruce or Bruce or Derek?
I, I do have some, couple things for you, so. So this Friday, we are getting a visit from the pharmacy board from the state of Ohio. This is just going to be a routine thing, um, I don't think it's ever happened before. We're kind of, we're kind of out here in the middle of flyover country, so to speak, where we're in that area that they don't really pay too much attention to us. But because of the recent issues, uh, they decided, you know, let's go out and make sure that, uh, all your, all your medications are, you know, what, what you say they are and that they're locked up and everything like that. I know that you guys have been looking at, you know, the possibility of, you know, what, what's going on at the hospital. I mean, there's, you're going to have to, and I, we've said this before, you're gonna have to look at the possibility of hiring more people. Uh, there's no ifs, ands or buts about it. And I know that, I know that there's been a big contention to get the EMRs to respond more. But unfortunately, it's just like everything else and, and, and right now, having volunteers is really not an option. Because volunteers, for the most part, um, they've got, if they've got something else to do, that's what they're going to do. You know, with EMS and with fire, we have a certain number of continuing education requirements to do. And if these people don't continue their, or do their education, they can no longer run as an EMR, EMT, paramedic, you know. So, some of the, some of the volunteers are looking at, at why do I have to do all these continuing education credits? Or why would I have to, you know, why am I putting myself out there for all this, uh, when I can just sit at home? Or I've got, I can do a million other things, so that's just something to keep in the back of your head, so.
Alright.
We talked about that before, you know, maybe doing our due diligence in having a plan of action when things, if things happen at the hospital.
Yeah.
We'd be ready for it, uh, to a degree, we can't be a hundred percent ready, but having a plan in place and having everybody on the same page is our due diligence.
So, I, I guess, I, I guess from my standpoint, um, what I'd like to do is I would like to get with Bruce and probably place a fire and let's come up with a plan of action. So that way, when or if this does happen, that we're, that we're proactive and not reactive. I mean, a lot of times, uh, we're reactive in what we, in response. This way, we're proactive, we, we have a plan in place and we work that plan, then, then I think we'll be good to go.
I agree.
Is this, uh, possibly not having a second squad, uh, can I put it in real quick?
Uh, a hundred percent, a hundred percent, and I'll give, I'll, I'll just give you, for instance, last night, last night, I was at, I was at my full-time job and my, and my I am responding is going off about every couple hours, uh, for squad runs. There was two, there just happened to be two squad runs at the same time. One came in and a crew went out on it and then another, another nine-one-one came in. And it was, luckily it wasn't for anything major, but, um, we did end up having to call for a mutual aid response, which they were then disregarded, but not having that second squad really does throw everything into, uh, into a tizzy, so to speak. So, um, that is something that you, that, that second squad really has to, has to be fixed, so.
Is there any type of a program that like in EMS units or, you know, has a problem and a squad goes down, you can borrow one, lease one, is there anything like that?
That I don't know, that I don't know, um, a, a company that, a company that would probably have that, um, would be Ron and I think they're out of Van Works.
They're out of Van Works.
Yeah, um, something that we could look at. Again, you know, you're looking at just trying to get grants or whatever for, for equipment. You know, if we could, if we could lease a, lease something, you know, we'll bring that to you as far as, okay, here's, here's an option. But yeah, not having that second squad does, does throw everything into a bind, so to speak. I mean, you know, you did have two people on the crew last night, um, that was able to go to the first one. But if you don't have that second squad, it, it, you know, you really can't respond, um, to another nine-one-one, so.
I recommend you keep with a plan, start working on a plan like I think you started on it and get with police and fire and get something worked up as soon as possible, so.
Yeah.
Anybody have a question?
Yeah, uh, I would definitely, uh, this is, I had my doctor appointment last week and doctor had mentioned that they had an email last week that pretty much, he's like, he was, it's pretty much official and done, so that's what my doctor told me.
I will disagree with that.
Yeah.
Alright, good one, he was, he had said, he had said the latest email he had was, he was, he was like, he goes, I wouldn't bet on anything sticking around, so.
The, the problem is, is that everything is rumors and hearsay, so until we get the, I, I know it's, I know it's so easy to say, well, until we get the official, uh, until we get the official word on, on what's going on, you know, personally, I, I hope that hospital never closes. You know, that is such a tremendous asset that we would be losing, but we also have to be very prepared, you know, so.
We have, yeah, EMTs that are gonna be graduating from college and possibly moving on, we've got an EMT that's getting close to retirement. So, I think we need to be posting something soon anyway.
Yeah, I mean, you got, yeah, you got, you got one gentleman who, like you said, he has posted retirement and he's, he's had forty years of service. Um, and when he finally does retire, this is beyond, but when he finally does retire, he needs to party. You do have somebody who's in, in nursing school, you know, um, so, you know, just having that will take you down to, you know, to.
Right.
Full-timers, um, because I myself, I've got a full-time job, you know, uh, the other, the, the part-timer that you have, he's got a full-time job. So it's, it's kind of hard to, you know, sometimes, sometimes have the extra time to, to respond, you know. I, I try to make as many calls as I possibly can, but, you know, sleep, sleep sometimes needs, needs to happen too, so. But yeah, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't say that you need to be looking at, um, at least four. And the reason why I say that is, is that we've also been kind of kicking around the idea of, 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 you know, maybe, uh, doing away with the eight hours and going to a twenty-four hour system, you know, that we have to look at budgeting as far as, you know, how, how does that affect budget value-wise? You know, and, and, you know, do the other EMTs even wanna do that? So, you know, right now, Hicksville EMS, I think, is the only one that does eight hours, most everybody else does twelves, twelves or twenty-fours. So, you know, those are things that has to come into play that we have to think about.
I know you mentioned being proactive, I mean, we have mentioned several times that we need some sort of contingency plan. And you know, some of these job titles, you know, even the coordinator job title, you know, some of that needs to be filtered through police, fire and EMS and start that dialogue, like we can't, you, you gotta come to us with some ideas.
Right.
We can't approve anything here unless we have that.
Well.
So I do hope that you, you know, you really do sit down, you know, especially as being a department head, that you sit down and you get serious. And you know, Bruce, you've come here with some great ideas the last few times and just doing some great problem solving, you know, so I really do hope that you guys work together and figure something out. We want to support you, it is not, trust me, no one here wants to see this fail.
Well.
Money is an issue.
It, it, it is.
I mean, I've stated this before and I'll say it again, same thing with police, you guys don't get paid enough, you don't. But if we, we gave you what you truly deserved, we couldn't afford it.
Right.
So we have to really break down what that looks like.
Right.
So you have to come to us with those numbers and with those job titles.
Right.
So that we can sit down and we can fight for you.
Well, and, and I talked to our state rep, um, I, I did talk to our state rep, uh, last week, I think it was.
Last Friday?
And, uh, and I had told him point-blank, uh, that the whole reimbursement process for Medicaid and Medicare was a, was a joke. And that the, that the state really need to look into raising reimbursement rates, you know, uh, or getting somebody at the federal level to look at raising reimbursement rates, um, because it's not just us, this is a nationwide problem. You are losing EMS, you are losing EMTs, paramedics and people to higher-paying jobs or to even, or, or to even jobs that doesn't have the same amount of stress that we do. I just saw where like Chick-fil-A was offering cooks twenty-five dollars an hour. I, I mean, I know it's hard for a small village like the village of Hicksville to compete, you know, for EMS at, at twenty-five, twenty-six dollars an hour. I know it's hard, so that's why we have to come up with, you know, we, we will come up with what, what we can as far as contingencies and getting, getting money and, and things like that, so, alright?
Thank you Bruce.
Thank you very much.
Park director, water, sanitary, nobody else here, anybody have any questions for Bruce?
Now it's the Bruces.
The Bruces.
I do wanna just talk momentarily, I more or less just wanna introduce myself, I'm kind of new to the village, but, um, this village has welcomed me with open arms. So, I'm very related for that. Uh, I, I've been here next door as far as the fire service goes for a little less than two years. I came from a bigger city, um, my family's, my in-laws are well-known around here, so my wife wanted to come back this way. I accepted it with open arms, never heard of Hicksville until I got tied up with her, okay, so. There's a culture shock for me, so to speak, but as far as like just the culture and the embrace that I've got from here, I see a lot of good within Hicksville. They say Hicksville has amazed me before I got here, so maybe I might just be talking crazy. But as far as the EMS side goes, I'm really mindful a lot of times as far as like, you guys just passed the EMS levy for us, so I'm pro Hicksville. I want us to be there to strive, okay? Letting Cal out the bag, no side gets him, I think he's done a wonderful job, but I was also one of the candidates that applied for the chief positions well. I was not selected, am I on both sides of the coin, yes, I'm fire and I'm EMS, okay? I come with a lot of knowledge, but never here or there, I'm not okay, I just wanna stay and play and have fun and enjoy. But I'm committed and I'm serious about what goes on within the department. With the hospital threatening to possibly close, do I see the run volume picking up, yes. So to piggyback off what Bruce Silkot was saying, um, Bruce too, having another EMS is gonna be imperative. Having more EMT is gonna be imperative, I don't have the answer to how we're gonna get these people in here, okay? But my go as, in my mind, if I had became chief or was selected chief, to try to build this reputation for Hicksville. As I say, any outside jurisdiction that called Hicksville, they were on their A-games, that's the image I was wanting to leave. But if we are constantly have to, which is out of our control, call Sherwood because we don't have nobody that wants to get out of bed or respond, or call Farmer even though they don't have an EMS side, or even Atwood. I'm all about the whole, we're a big family, EMS takes care of EMS, fire takes care of fire, you know, I'm all game on that. But if we don't take care of our own and have our own close-knit group and have our own shine, I think, like he was saying, eventually it's, the problem's gonna get worse, like I said, we already run with minimum staffing, I get, I don't understand a whole lot about budgeting, I do get it. Cause I'm not stupid, but I do get the budgeting thing, money's money, uh, unfortunately, it, it makes the world go around. I just wanna leave, you know, as mine is that we could be powerful on all angles as far as EMS. I want EMS and fire to be a place that's known to where, guess what, if the over-the-border calls us, hey, we gonna call Hicksville, they got their game together. They got a good roll crew over there, you know, these guys respond, you know, they don't have to wait for somebody to get out of bed or nobody to respond and, you know, I hire. So I say all that to say this, is that. So, I say all that to say this is that I'm glad that I'm here in Hicksville now even though it's been a culture shock, you know what I'm saying? But I really want all you guys in whatever level, work with both Bruces for us to become a stronger unit next door. Because outside of just a hospital possibly failing, I want somewhere to be strong. If the hospital ain't strong, I want the EMS to be strong. Even if we have to travel to Bryan or, you know, Pawnee or, you know, Defiance, whichever one. I just want, whatever we need to do to get this together, whether it's short-term or long-term, within the next few years, I want us to be to where we have everything together and there's no ifs, ands, buts about it. And we could be a powerful Hicksville EMS and fire squad. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Derek. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Appreciate, thanks again for all your due diligence and working, working out the solutions and problems and the ideas and keep moving forward. At this time, we have the fiscal officers report.
I don't have much this time, just the fund status and cash summary, January police collections. And to let everybody know, debits are ready to go as soon as I get them. I'm waiting for the forms to get here and they should come this week.
Thank you, Cheryl. I have a small, before we, yeah. My mayor's report, I'll do that now and then we can go into nominations for executive session or motions. But again, I wanted to thank the street department, the fire, the EMS, the police personnel for working through the snow event here and the better call. They know they've been out working, making runs, cleaning the streets and doing their due diligence and protecting our public safety. So, thank you for all of them and what they've done. Real quick, I attended mayor's court, I talked to you about that last Thursday to see my certification, so working with chief on that and Jennifer. Thursday, I'll be going to the Defiance CIC meeting, their monthly meeting, and also the Defiance Planning Commission meeting after that. Another thing's going on here in February is Defiance County Health Department is doing a free community health screening. It's at Defiance College on Thursday, February fifteenth, from nine AM to three PM. It is in the Sherrick Campus Center. There's been blood pressure, body mass index, mine's big. Glucose, waist to hip ratio and a three-minute step test. So, if you want to take advantage of the Fines Health Department and taking care of some of our health needs, please go over there and be a part of that. So, boy, they're doing refreshments too. I see that now, that's good. Yeah. But I don't know, is anything else have for council?
I have something I should mention in my report. After the last bit of snow that we had, we do have an issue with one of our plow trucks. We normally run three and we're down to two. So, if we was to get snow tonight, tomorrow, maybe the next day, we're only gonna be running two trucks until we can get the third truck off of.
Which one?
We have to upsize the blade itself, the whole plow box and everything. The one that's on it was outfitted by a third-party outfitter for us and we bought it new in twenty-one or twenty-two. It's pretty much a heavy residential one and it just, it just not, does not take the abuse that it gets.
Talked to Cory about it, I talked to him earlier about it and they've had two repairs over the last couple of years and the repairs are not cheap. They're like in sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars. And pretty much the company had put the plow blade, the box, anything else on it, put one on a truck that should not have ever been put on four fifty. And you figure the four fifty, you put salt spreader in the back and add salt and all that extra weight and force. It was not, that plow blade should never went on a truck like that.
Yeah, I mean, it was no fault to anybody in the village. I mean, we obviously entrusted the outfitter to put that on there and that's what they ended up putting on there. We've already spent three thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars in repairs on two different pairs on it the last two winters. It needs a third repair. So, they will take ours in on trade and this is.
Same place? Are we going back to the same place?
This place is just a forty-nine we're gonna deal with. They will give us some money on trade in on ours. So, we'll be under the five thousand dollar mark for one. It's a lot more, you know, commercial grade.
Keeping blade the same size because to go do a bigger blade, you gotta redo all sorts of framework and stuff on it for the brackets.
Especially a plug-and-play. But it's built.
It'll be heavier duty.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Did you motion to go in executive session?
I made a motion to go in the executive session regarding plan acquisition or is that what?
I believe so.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll say the motion.
Roll call.
Edwin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
That's it.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.